Father, we just tell you once again, Father, we thank you for just your grace and your mercy. Thank you for any blessings you have bestowed upon us. Father, we just ask that you just, uh, leading guide us, uh, have us in, in, in your heart. And Father, we just wrap you on our ground and help us to make the decisions of course that I will. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you everybody for being here tonight. Just a reminder that, uh, definitely we will always have a work session unless we cancel. So, uh, look forward to happen unless there's a comment at normally at the regular meeting that either the agenda is light or there's nothing really there that we need to go over. So, uh, be aware that the five thirty time would stand on Monday for the time being. And tonight we've just got a couple of items that we can go over. Um, I think the first one, um, did you say you thought John would be here tonight?
No.
I don't know, okay.
He's, I, I assume he won't because he usually has something on Monday nights.
With, well, he had his Bible study on Monday, but he had, uh, something on the agenda, so I didn't know whether...
I haven't heard from him.
Okay. Cause that was the first one we had to discuss was the, um, basically a resolution to move forward. We're letting the mayor negotiate on a proposal to do a study or a plan, I guess, an initial plan for Roughwater Park. We didn't have a lot of details, so I was hoping John could be here to give us more. I had sent James an extensive, uh, email outlining some things I thought we might need, but he said that was all he had, was the same thing we got in our email, which was the, maybe the one or two paragraphs indicating an amount of money, uh, for a process. And, uh, we are making an assumption, uh, that that might come out of the, uh, some of the money that was, uh, done with Spire paid into it for using that right away when they, uh, did the, uh, laying of the major pipeline through the front there, through, I guess that's a side. But, uh, at this point I have no additional details. The biggest problem we would have was based on the, uh, some of the potential to do this and move forward. It would almost be premature, plus I don't know, there were several, David had talked to a group. Uh, I think the mayor's been approached by a group and we still have, uh, the John DeRue contract. We've still got that sitting out there that we probably need to, I think the best thing we need to do on that is just go ahead and, uh, serve notice on it and start over. Cause we've got other people that also are offering to, uh, do things with the field. I think the mayor has been contacted on a couple of things, so.
I, I'd be happy to give you enough, say, I think, I think my was the other one?
Please.
Okay. Uh, I, I can just tell you what I know. Um, I, I think, I'll start at the end and then come back the other way. I think what you just said about the current contract, before you all get too deep in other plans and stuff, I think that I, I've been saying it for a long time now, I think that contract needs to be dealt with. Meaning, if I were advising you, I would say to serve notice to cancel that contract and just start over with it once in a while. That's the current, that's the process. There is a provision in there, and I think Leslie can speak to that, there's a provision in there for doing that. I think this is a thirty or thirty days.
Thirty days, for any reason at all.
And we would have to do that in the form of a resolution?
Since the council approves contracts, it would probably be wise to have a resolution approving the termination, the early termination of the contract.
Would turning that into a dog park and, and putting dirt over it like we did, would that not constitute a breach of contract on our part?
I, I can't say whether what has already happened would constitute a breach of this contract or not. It appears to me that this contract has not been closely followed probably by either party. Um, but I don't, I obviously haven't been involved, so I don't know that for sure. But I can tell you that you do have the option to terminate on those days for no reason or for any reason that you choose.
Would the resolution take place of the formal letter that we need to send to him or?
Well, you would just, what you do is resolve the termination contract, then the mayor would, would send the letter.
Gotcha, terminate it. Okay.
Is that something we can go ahead and add to the agenda and take care of that tomorrow night?
Sure.
That be acceptable?
We would just have to pass that on to James to make sure it's on the agenda and we have something worded if we can put before the group.
I just think, I just think it'd be prudent on your part to deal with that because otherwise, I think the bigger issue, I'm not concerned about the dog park, the bigger issue is entertaining other proposals and, and things like that and, and while you still have a contract on it, you know? Um, so I, I just think it makes sense to do, but, uh, that law's in your court. I think if you take that action, I think that's probably a prudent step. Um, so then to, to what else has transpired since maybe last met? Uh, there was a group who approached, uh, either John or David or both, I'm not sure, uh, that wanted to meet with them and talk about, um, a deal on the fields. Uh, the value in the fields right now to the outside parties is that doing travel ball, that, that's where the interest lies, no matter whether it's the money currently have now or any of these that are approaching us and a number of them approach us. Apparently fields are in shortage and, and so there's a lot of interest in that for these travel ball tournaments. The group, I, I went with Frank, uh, out there the first time this group wanted to meet. They were leaving out of the park, so Frank and I went just to hear what they had to say. David Spidey was there, John did not show up for that one. I'm not sure what, I thought he was going to be there, but he wasn't. Um, I think John told me he met with them afterwards, uh, a day or two later. I'm not positive on that.
What's the name?
It was just a couple of guys, I don't, I don't, I don't recall, there may be a name. I'll see that, but I don't recall what it was. Um, they were wanting to do softball and they were, they were wanting to take over two or three of the fields and get them up to speed, get them in, in pristine condition so that they could attract outside folks to come in. They said that they could, they could guarantee, quote unquote guarantee, they, they, they would, they would have four, four hundred and fifty people at the park every weekend, um, with that type of, that type of program. Um, that's what they, that's what they proposed. Um, again, I haven't had any follow-up with them other than I, I sat down and listened to the meeting. I think your wife was, no, your wife was not there, that was another meeting that we had with the parks. Um, that was with the rule, uh, that we met. Um, so I don't know where John and where David are on that in terms of their discussions of having follow-up, I have not had any follow-up. I couldn't give you the name of the people, uh, my life depended on it right now. I was just there to care what they had to say. After the last part meeting, John approached me and wanted to, um, we had asked about, several of you had been asking about a plan that he alluded to that he had. And I had suggested at the meeting we had out at the field with the rule, it was DeRue, Frank, John, I believe, David and Samantha Goodman were there. Um, we asked, you know, John, I suggested to John that he bring his plan to, to the council, you know, to, to work sessions so that you all could see it. I felt like you, you see it, but what he has alluded to at the time. He, he contacted me afterwards and said, "Well, I want, I really want you to meet the guys that did this and, and I want to go with you." And so, instead of meeting, and, and we had a meeting. It's the only time I've met the gentleman, it's Charles Williams. I think you all got information on that in this, this here. Um, he had a, a, um, done some work on sketching out what it could be, what the parks could be. I suggested that what we needed was a conceptual plan, um, and, and suggested that he go back and that he, um, develop a proposal to come to you all to, to be considered, which is what you have in front of you now. Um, I didn't think it would be as much cost-wise because what I saw that he had looked like he had done a lot of the work already. But I'm not here to, um, calculate anybody's speed for, for what they do, but I, my opinion was I thought the price was a little bit high. I thought the concept was, was pretty good. We made a couple of suggestions and said, "Why don't you look at tweaking it here, turning it this, this way, that sort of thing." But overall, I thought he had some, some good concepts and ideas on it. Uh, there were a couple of things though that I didn't agree with, with, in the proposal, and I shared that with John, is that, uh, why I thought the price was a little high. I don't know what the price should be, but I just felt that it was a little bit high. And there was a phrase in there or statement in there that his, if, if we chose to go with that and build that out, then we would use their firm for the future architectural services. And I don't sign blank checks, so, or give blank checks, uh, I guess nobody signs. But, um, I, I just think we need to, you know, before, before, again, I don't have a vote on it, but I would think before you voted on it to approve it, that you wouldn't want to just give someone a blank check and, and say, "Here, go, go do it," that you want to know more about it. So, that, that's what I know about it, that's what's happened and transpired since the last council meeting and our park meetings. And, uh, I, I think, you know, there's room for discussion there among yourselves to try to figure out where you head from here. Um, I do think we need to get off that center of the parks. We've been talking about parks for over a year now. Uh, I first visited after I was in the office about January of last year. I went to the parks and saw the shape they were in and it wasn't good and it's not much better than now. So, uh, and it's not really better on some, so we just need to address that going forward.
And there was also language in the letter just proposing the amount, I think, that indicated there may be substantial changes in the dollar amount if we made modifications.
Well, I think what that is, I think...
I know that's a catch-all.
There's a, there's a misunderstanding on that, yeah. I, I, I think that's pretty standard that you say, "Here is my scope of work." That, I, I think is missing there, you don't see what the scope of work is. But whatever the scope of work, here's my scope of work. And when I do this and I present it to you and you say, "You know what, I really don't, I, I really don't want baseball fields, I want tennis courts," you know, or whatever. Those are changes that, you know, someone's not going to guarantee they're going to do for you if you didn't tell them that in the beginning. So, I think that's, I think that's what that is, but, yeah, it, you know, it could be refined a little bit more.
Yeah, let me kind of chime in as, as far as some of the, um, statements that, that you made. Um, Mr. Williams and his father has been to the council meetings, I know, two times. I'm, I'm just going to say a couple of times, but it may have been more, but I know for sure a couple of times. Terry, I know you, you remember that. Um, on one of those instances, um, he did bring a preliminary conceptual design of the parks. Um, just going back to their proposal, you mentioned the proposal and he did mention, and all of us was forwarded the email from John stating what that proposal included. And in that proposal, it included an assessment of best viable options, meaning that, yes, it would change depending on what our need is. So, as far as the cost to actually build out this design, um, you know, I don't know what that cost would be, but just from the proposal standpoint, whatever we want in there, that's what he's willing to, to put in. But, starting from the beginning, um, you mentioned something about the contract with, um, Mr. DeRue.
The rule?
The rule, yeah. Um, it seemed like, and it's been going on for years and this is not a knock on anyone because we're all responsible, we're all stewards of the city. But we've been patching and patching these parks for so long and we all know that our city's changing. We have more neighborhoods, um, more new subdivisions, we have more families moving in. Um, we really need to kind of look, like you say, you took a tour of our parks. We really need to look at our parks real hard and, and make a hardcore decision as far as where we want to go with our parks because we have families now. Uh, well, we have families leaving, but as you can see, Irondale is transitioning and one of the main attractions of, one of the main resources that families look at when they come in here are parks, okay? Where can I go to, um, spend time with my family in my community? So, we really need to take a hard line look at, um, where our parks are and, um, kind of, you know, bust thugs, you know, open and see what we can do.
I think to get Roughwater Park up to the standard of what's, uh, being built out there today, we'd have to just, uh, push it all down and start over because most, most parks, cities have a concession stand in the middle with the parks all around it. And, uh, when I was a kid, there was one ball field out there, number one. And it, over the years, a park has been added as, as, uh, there was seen need to, to do so. And gosh, I guess what, fifteen, eighteen years ago, they added park field number five and had to cut down half a mountain to get it in there. You know, so it's just been built up over a period of fifty years or more. Um, so, you know, it's, it's just, if, if we want to update it, I would think we'd just have to push it all down and start over.
Well, I think I agree with both of you. I think that's, that's what this is about, that's what this special is about is what, we've got a piece of land, imagine you've got a blank canvas. How do you, how do you design that so that everything fits together and achieves what we want to achieve? And we have something that is, something we can all be proud of, you know, to do that. And so, I, I, yeah, I, I don't, you can, you can plant more grass and you can fix drainage and pay a little bit of parking, but you can't, you can't build a park there by doing that that long-term you're going to be proud of. So, this is, this is, you know, come to Irondale and a good part of this. So, and that was, I think that was the idea behind this, of getting this conceptual plan out there, saying, "This is what, this is what we've got, we know what we've got, this is what we can do." You know, we want to. And we can't, and we know we can't do it all at one time, we know we can't, you know, and maybe that's why you, you have a group that says, "Okay, I'll take control of the, of, of bringing the ball fields up. If I can use those for travel ball, you know, I'll, I'll do that." And, and we talked about coexisting with, with, um, with recreational ball and that, you know, and that, that can be done, but you need somebody to help you get there. So, none of us, none of us, as much as we might think we know, none of us are experts in that too.
I've got a granddaughter who does travel ball and they do bring hundreds of people out every game. You know, it's a, it's a two, three day thing.
Every weekend.
Yeah, but I don't want to be the dead horse, but I, I think we're losing out on the, on some revenue with the travel ball. And I don't have travel ball, but, uh, AU ball, basketball, we're missing out on many opportunities. So, I, I think, you know, by, and, and, and I'm going to go back to the process again. Everybody, I always hear you talk about process. I think we need to really rely on the committee and the committee brings it back to the council as far as doing the legwork on this. I don't know how much work has been done, I know there have been a couple of meetings based on what I've been hearing, but, you know, it, it, we really need to take a hard line approach on this and, and let it go through the process and come back and say, "Hey, this is what we need." But, that's it, I, I don't want to do anything.
Well, I think at this point we're basically in the chicken egg mode. Uh, we've had so many plans we've developed and because we couldn't afford to move forward with them, they set and they've aged and they've become non-useable. So, it seems premature to go forward with any type of plan at this point till we see where our finances are as we go into our new budget. Now, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, it's always finance. Can we, you mentioned something about the per month, can we lease? I mean, I hate to miss out on that travel ball softball. Can we lease the property, uh, for three months or something? And gain the revi, yeah, legally and gain the revenue, yeah?
Sure, and you would probably want to take care of the SLAM contract first, or at least...
Is that the DeRue thing? Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I agree.
And I would, I would, you know, the travel ball, they're just there on maybe Fridays, but it sucks all day Saturday and Sunday, we just, I mean, it's, it's the best part of the days of the week.
And that's what this group that's wanting to do the softball talked about. And they're not going to do a three-month lease because they're going to be investing a lot in.
Right, I just threw that thing.
Yeah.
They do that all year round.
They're going to want, they're going to want a three-year lease or something like that, you know, to make it work their investment into whatever. And we didn't get into that detail, but I just know that if they're going to invest that kind of money because the expectation is going to be for them to do that where your granddaughter plays ball on nice fields. I can guarantee you, I know where it is, but I can guarantee you that they're doing that, it's on a nice field. And so, if these people are going to put that money in that, then they're going to want to know that we can use it for enough time to get our money.
We can always work on that.
They have teams come from all over the state and sell them from L.A., to Lake.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a big deal, I mean, I've never been involved in it directly, but it's a big deal.
Lease agreement.
So, well, and what that may do, what that may do is if you partner like that is you may get someone who's then willing to invest some, which expedites our getting the fields like we want them. And then we can take what funding we have and work on the rest of the park. You know, the concessions or the whatever outside the fields that needs to be done.
Whatever master plan we have.
And you would have to have the concessions open for the travel ball.
Oh, I know.
Have to be, you know, we've got to deal with them.
And we actually showed you, the group, the last group that was there, we actually showed them the concession stand and they were ecstatic. And we, it's the nicest thing we got out there, it's a concession stand. It really is.
One thing I would suggest is to consider putting whatever it is that you're thinking about doing out for proposal, at least to the extent that it would be considered an exclusive contract for any portion of anything.
Okay. So, so I guess at this point, uh, you have to get to you in just a minute, but I think we can agree, since we can't vote on anything, but we can agree definitely we need to add in cancellation to tomorrow night's agenda. We probably need to take this off the agenda till we've had more time to do the base work on it because I, I could not go forward with a vote on something like this, knowing where we are now. But, uh...
I think we, I think we need to mention that to John though. And I'll be fair and say, I think we really need to mention it.
But just take it for an undetermined length of time, that way, uh, he'll be out there if he wants to bring it back.
Well, I don't think it's a matter of not bringing it back, to be honest with you. I think at some point, like Counselor Wilson said, we're going to address it. It's just, it's timing more than anything right now.
Right, okay.
I think what you could do is what our attorney suggested is if you're going to start going down that route and you're going to take care of the DeRue contract or the SLAM contract, then you could go ahead and authorize the, the solicitation of, of proposals, um, so that that can be in the works if you want to.
Now, I think, uh, you're on the parks, right?
Aye.
And, uh, David.
Yes.
And, um, now as we bring them up to David, we're thinking of them doing the base work at least they're really going to have to get busy because to come up with a proposal that we're here for, get it out there. That's what we're here for. And we would basically depend on them to come up with it and bring it to us and to peruse and...
I think if somebody wants our, our contract to do architectural work, they ought to bring us something, show us what their, what their ideas are before we give them any money.
General, yeah, you have a reason, they can't go wait ballpark, but, uh, yeah, excuse me, fine. But anyway, Mr. Goodman, I think you got the comment you...
Yeah, a couple of things, point of reference. Um, last season, there were a couple of groups, one from Trustville, one from Abidale, they came out, travel ball guys, and they just started using fields. And we told them, "Hey, you got to go talk to DeRue, he's managing." And DeRue would run them off, they're competitors. So, he's kind of incentivized to run them off. If we have another DeRue with an extended contract, um, they might do the same kind of thing. When I went to the busy Dean, um, meeting for the whole metro area, I had a good conversation with Jasper and Pleasant Grove Parking Rec Directors. And I asked them how they deal with that and they said, um, for the travel ball guys, because there's such a demand, if these guys don't have anywhere to go, they have their own, everybody runs them off because they see them as competitors and they're stealing kids. So, there's this huge demand. Um, so when they come, what they do is they let them use the field for an hour and have a fixed rate. And then they, um, they agree on Saturday to not have their RAC program play past a certain hour. And after that, they have travel ball tournament. And they, I think they do Friday, Saturday, Sunday, because like you were saying, people will travel in. Um, I'm a coach at a school and some of my kids go all the way to New York to play travel ball. So, it's a huge business, a lot of money to be committed through it to fix up parks.
And you got Shay and his, uh, park over there and they're, they do travel ball. In fact, my granddaughter played against their team.
Well, I, I think rather than getting into a deeper discussion, it's obvious we've got some opportunity. Um, and, uh, I think, uh, with one member of the committee here, yeah, take the word back and get that. The question would be tomorrow night, do we leave it on the agenda as it stands and table it? Or do we just take it off the agenda till we've got more information to bring it back and make a decision where we actually, we're not going to see the effects of anything we've done this year. Uh, hopefully we get the budget hold by the end of the year, but it's going to be next year's budget if we have anything to go over and above that and start looking at parks, roads, et cetera.
I wouldn't think we got any money to spend on it right now anyway.
Well, it, it, no matter, no matter what the situation is, well, yeah, it matters what the situation is, but I, I think it's, it's only fair as far as taking this off. I understand the process as far as what you're talking about, but without Counselor London and Counselor Spivey here, I think we need to at least leave it for now and tomorrow if we take it off. That'd be fine.
We have to discuss it with them.
Can you do that pre-county?
At least. At least.
So, definitely add the one for cancellation. Definitely add the one for cancellation over the rule to, to contract.
Yeah.
Okay?
Uh-huh.
Your resolutions, James?
Okay. So, we agree on that and then we'll get the other and get it back on track. But we definitely have a lot of base work to do before we can go forward with anything. Cause I just don't want, even if it was fifty dollars, why spend it if we can't do something at this point? We need to get it where we can move forward and do things that we need to do. And if we have some options, kind of like the time we had the option to replace the sign down on Seventy-Eight, I went on the council, I'm not sure of the proposal, you know, we didn't do it, but that might have been a way to go forward with that, so.
Maybe we can get, uh, uh, travel, the, the gas station to fix that board.
Then we can tell. So, any more questions or discussion on that? All right? And our second thing was looking at, uh, for the festival that's going to be here for the beer license. And I don't know if there's any real questions on that or, um, not any typical of what we've done in the past or something.
I just want to make sure I was reading that correctly, so there's no expenses to the city.
No, we're talking about all we've got on the agenda. There are two different things we received. Only one's on the agenda and that's in reference to the beer license. Second item. John's here, if you have some questions. The other part is a conceptual letter, but it's not part of anything on the agenda at this point that I'm aware of.
Sell beer to Tootsie. Okay, have we approved the Tootsie?
Well, hey, you can talk about it, you...
So, we put in the car, so how we going to sell beer when we haven't, we haven't approved the Tootsie festival?
It was. It did.
Are you asking me?
It was.
What is, what is?
Yeah, it said it wasn't.
What is the Tootsie?
It was. It was.
When was it approved?
It didn't have a name, but they got the approval to hold it. Wasn't costing the city anything.
Okay, kind of refresh, yeah. I don't see the expenses.
I don't remember approving it as a beer license for anybody.
No, no, no beer license, yeah.
Yeah, that's what's on the agenda, yeah.
I'm sorry, to sell beer for the...
No, the, to hold the festival was approved.
Right.
Because it wouldn't cost the city anything.
Well, no, we didn't have to approve having the festival because it's just come to get a permit. So, there's no approval at council. Uh, all they got to do is come and get a permit to have, to have the festival from the mayor's office, from City Hall.
Right, they were told that. They were told, "All you need to do is get a permit."
Now, why, what do we, yeah, and now what do we, why do we need to approve Tootsie?
Well, I don't know about Tootsie, I wish it was a different thing.
Well, it's their festival, like you call it anything they want to.
I'm not wrong, tell us what it's all about.
Terry, all you're looking at on the resolution tomorrow night is allow, is giving them a beer license to sell beer at the event.
Uh-huh.
It has nothing to do with anything else. It was a long letter that has some other things, uh, that... There was a long letter that has some other things that John outlined, different things that might need to, you know, help with closing streets, et cetera. But, all we're talking about, all we're talking about tomorrow night is the beer license rights off.
And I just want to know who these people are.
What people?
Two-two.
Exchange Club.
Exchange Club. Exchange Club is the one that's sponsoring the event, celebrating Irondale.
Right.
Two-two twenty-seven. And we did this because it wasn't going to happen in downtown Irondale, so we submitted to the city the proposal that you see right there in front of you, and we have signatures of the chief of police, the fire chief, and also Mr. Stewart in order to actually the plan. We've donated, given a hundred dollars into it, we made the submission, but we haven't gotten the signatures on all these things yet because there's some question about crossing railroad tracks.
I can address that if you want. Can he come up and address you all?
Oh, please.
Come on.
You're welcome to, John. Please.
So, we have, as you know, John, I don't think they know, we have discussed the street closures and all, and the chief didn't give you a response on that. He did not hear back from you after that.
I tried to meet with him three times, meeting over here, and he didn't show up.
Okay, so let me answer that then, in his absence. It is the same thing that he said at the beginning, is he is not inclined to have the festival on both sides of the tracks. And he told you that, and that has not-
First, the second time he told me this, yes.
Okay, and that has not changed, because we think that's a, that's a pretty critical safety issue, to have people walking back and forth, six lines, six tracks of trainings there. So, I think, I think from the city's standpoint, we can work with you on what streets need to be closed on one side or the other, but I see no way that it's going to happen on both sides.
Well, I understand some of the fear, but it's been done for twenty-seven years, and we haven't had an incident. And I know that we've had changes in who's running the festival and, and political aspects of the city there, but I just, I don't see the reason. I am prepared to go ahead and do just one side, but I'm going to have to pay for a stage, I'm going to have to pay for a whole lot more things that I didn't have to pay for if we could use a stage on the other side of the street.
Well, you can use the stage on the other side of the street, you just can't go back and forth over six.
So, what's going to happen? I mean, are you going to put a blockade up there, Mayor, and stop people from crossing it? I mean, I'm just asking the-
I'm not going to debate the issue with you, because the chief has made a decision on that, and I support him on that, and I think he has valid reasons for not wanting kids running back and forth across the street, across the tracks. That may or may not be as big of a concern for you, but it is a big concern for us, and I would assume it would be a concern for the council. But, I haven't consulted them on that. He is the one that gives the advice on that, and I'm prepared to follow his advice, as opposed to your wish.
I understand. Well, then, Boles license that's in front of everybody will not change, except for the fact that we'll have it strictly on this side. And if we can use the stage on the other side, fine. So, people are going to have to walk all the way around? Is that the way the issue is, or how is that going to work?
I'm saying, we are prepared to block off the necessary streets on one side or the other. We are not prepared or inclined and will not approve for a festival to cross the six lines, six tracks. It's not going to do it. I mean, we can talk about it as long as you want, as long as you want to. Well, it's the same decision he gave you in the beginning.
No, it wasn't, because I sat down and talked with him, and the whole mission was all was made about not crossing the tracks. Then we mentioned again, when we talked to the second time.
That's absolutely correct. You presented, you presented a request to him, he said he would take that and consider it, and his answer was, when he came back the second time, his answer was that that was not deemed to be safe.
All right, well, that's, I'm just going to be doing it on this side of tracks now. And, and I'll work out somehow and find, find some money someplace, because the city's not going to furnish it. I'm not expecting the city to do that.
So, he didn't furnish it for, for others, either?
I'm not expecting, did he? I'm not, all right. Anyway.
But remember tomorrow night, Jim, when all the city is considering the beer, right?
Yeah.
The point is, I've got to get this, the idea of having the permit there to sell beer was important, because I've got to get that going with the control. And that takes time.
I don't have any problem with that at all.
All right, well, that's the reason why it appears that the cart's in front of the harvest.
Yeah, I know about that.
We just, you know, we see two, Irondale, two, we don't know who that is. You know, is that a, a club, an individual, or?
The Exchange Club of Irondale Foundation is supporting the festival in Irondale, and it's called, we're celebrating it, because we were going to be sued by Chris Cruz if we used Irondale as a festival.
Okay. I think we ought to sue Chris Cruz, because-
Well, I'm giving an explanation, gentlemen. I'm just giving you an explanation.
That's not a question for this purpose, but tomorrow night, remember what you're focusing on if you want. We have not had anything brought before to consider the other, so the chief and the fire chief and everybody put their stamp on it that goes forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Any additional comments in the audience on that particular issue?
Anything else?
Well, just in relation to what's on the agenda, but I do have a question.
We're in work session.
Budget process. Where are we, where are we with the budget? How soon is it going to be submitted to the council?
Hopefully about September, first of all, September.
Okay. Yeah, James mentioned the other day, passing that he's in process, but September will be the hopeful date this year. Give us a little more time. And that's going to be, you know, it's going to be a real game this year, because we haven't considered some new streams of revenue, we haven't considered some positions.
We're going to have a doubt, and I don't think about that time either, so we won't come in until mid-September.
When you say add, what kind of?
On the occupational side.
Oh, okay.
But also, we've got our first return in September.
But we just, yesterday, and it was going to be closer to May, I guess, or two.
It's supposed to be us.
Well, we'll do our usual, all right. Any additional questions, Joe?
Most still adjourned.
Well, I appreciate everybody being here. Remember, this is your opportunity to ask questions, if you see something on the agenda. So, thank you for being here tonight, and do I have to say something on that, all in favor? Okay, well, thanks. All right, thank you very much.